I call the meeting of the Bay County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, April 18th, 2023 to order at 4:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Nemec?
Benajak?
Here.
Mallett?
Here.
Herrick?
Here.
Reckie?
Here.
Foyer?
Present.
Baggett?
Here.
invocation, please, by the Church, and then the implacable allegiance.
Almighty God, we ask that you will guide and give leadership to every member of this Board of Commissioners. We ask that you will give them knowledge and understanding so that the decisions made today and always will benefit every citizen of this committee. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes from 3:21:23.
Aloum.
Support.
Motion support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. You have the agenda approval. Motion approved.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Citizen input. We have five minutes for citizen input. Each person, five minutes. Any citizen inputs? Last call for citizen inputs. Okay, we'll close citizen input. Petitions and communications. So, we need a motion to go out of the regular order to do a public hearing.
Support.
It's going to be a closeout for Michigan Community Development Block Grant funding for CDBG CARES funding. And anybody wishing to comment on the closeout.
Do we need to vote on that? We need to vote on it.
What's that?
Vote.
That's right. Have to do a roll call vote.
Herrick?
Herrick, yes.
Reckie, yes. Foyer?
Yes.
Nemec?
Yes.
Benajak?
Yes.
Mallett?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes. Now, if anybody would like to comment, step forward. Anyone wish to comment? Anyone wish to comment? Need a motion to close the public hearing, so move.
Support.
Any discussion? Yeah, I don't think we need a roll call. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. City of Bay City, notification of public hearing establishing two neighborhood enterprise zones, districts. The public hearing will be held on May 15th at the city commission meeting.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a presentation, an update on the Bay County Health Department's strategic plan. Have a crew here. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. My name is Vicki, and I am the right part of Wright-Rich Consulting. We are a consulting firm that focuses on leadership development and also strategic planning. My partner Carl and I have over 40 years of experience working in higher education and nonprofit management, where we do this business and we do this work with nonprofit organizations and higher education institutions across the state. My passion is really around helping organizations, individuals, and teams thrive. So, I do this utilizing my expertise in leadership development, mindfulness, and utilizing a strength-based approach. I have a master's degree in positive organizational development and change from Case Western Reserve University. I also have a master's degree in higher education and administration from the University of Akron, and I did my bachelor's degree at Aquinas College in business and communication. I live currently in Muskegon with my dog, where we like to go hiking and go to the beach.
Good afternoon, everyone. As Vicki had said, my name is Carl Reich. I am the second part of Wright and Reich Consulting. Just a small bit of background about me. I worked for 20 years in higher education, doing conflict mediation, strategy, strategic planning, and everything else under the sun that had to do with student engagement. Originally, I am from the thumb. I currently live in Midland. It brings back chills to be here because I was married in the church like right that way. So, driving down here, I remember dating my wife, who kissed me on our way out the door and said, "Hey, make sure you go back by the old place." So, very much brings back chills. But just a little bit of educational background, my doctorate is from the University of Akron. I have a master's in communication from Grand Valley State University. I have a master's in higher education from the University of Akron, and my undergrad, of course, is from down the road at Saginaw Valley State University.
We're going to see if we can hit the right buttons here on this little thing. Awesome. I hit it a little too far. Oh. Got it.
Very quickly, we wanted to review the mission. The current mission is to protect and promote a healthy community and safe environment by providing quality services through all stages of life. Through our review, there was no significant difference or any need to reevaluate the mission of the Bay County Health Department.
We also reviewed the vision of the organization to be the leading public health agency meeting the needs of your community. Again, no need at this time to change the vision of the organization.
Scope of work. We talked with Joel in August. We had four points of our scope of work. One was leadership development. The second was team cohesion. The third was a high-level operation guide. In other words, trying to prioritize and figure out how to be the most efficient within their system, and then obviously to produce a strategic plan. What we are here today is to talk through that strategic plan.
I want to give you a little bit of background on our plan development process. So, as Carl mentioned, we did our phase one, which was really defining what the focus of the inquiry was, which was doing a strategic plan for the department. During phase two was our discovery phase. We used the best of what is or the strengths of the department. So, we asked some very strategic questions from focus groups, from the leadership team, and also Joel. We also then sent out surveys to partners of the Bay County Health Department and also some board members here. During phase three, we asked everybody to dream, like we want to know what the best of what is, to say, what could be? What is your ideal? And in a perfect world, what would this organization be doing? During phase four is our design phase, where we are planning what should be and creating those action steps. So, that's part of the strategic plan in its full capacity, is that design phase. And we also spoke with our leadership team last week to kind of put some finishing touches on what that looks like. Phase five is really about Bay County Health Department and the delivery aspect. You know, what will be in sustaining that vision for the strategic plan over the next three years? In the middle of this, we want to say that this is the Bay County Health Department's positive core, so really looking at what their strengths are and building upon that. We collected data from both qualitative and quantitative resources, and we utilized this approach of SOAR, which is strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results. Most of you have probably heard of SWOT analysis, which is really looking at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And we kind of turn that upside down and say, let's really look at our strengths to see what we can do and what we can achieve. When we look at those weaknesses and threats, oftentimes organizations focus on those weaknesses, and they can't get themselves out of that. They can't dig themselves out enough. So, we want to focus on their strengths.
I don't think I need to read everything that's on the screen for everybody, but here is the strengths that were found through, obviously, focus groups, surveys, any other pieces within the community. So, you can see, obviously, the COVID-19 response. You can see collaboration and partnerships. You can see grant writing. But here are a list of some of the strengths, but really the core pieces.
When we look at opportunities, aspirations, what the team had brought to us was really wanting to be more proactive. They want to be responsive and effective as an organization, more because of the pandemic. The team felt that they were very reactive, which I think most health departments had to be during this time, is being reactive. And so, really, when we're looking at our opportunities, aspirations, moving forward and what the direction is, is being more proactive.
There are five strategic priorities that were identified throughout the past nine months. We'll go over each strategic priority, and then obviously, we're going to open it up to questions. Strategic priority one was to reinvigorate the workforce and the staff satisfaction. It was clear in our work that employees of the Health Department felt a large strain during COVID-19. How do we reinvigorate that workforce? It is more cumbersome to fill those jobs. Also, turnover is high in those jobs. So, the first priority is to reinvigorate the workers.
Priority two is the Michigan Local Public Health Accreditation Program. This is something that the department has already been looking at doing. They've already started this process by meeting and doing assessments and having meetings with each other cross-departmentally. And it was something that we felt they needed to include as a part of their strategic plan as well, because it is taking on a huge part of work in order to do this accreditation. And it's something that they can also really publicly share with the community that they've gone through this accreditation process and highlight it as something that they've done.
Priority three was improve communication internally and to the community. With our work, obviously, we saw that there needs to be more work and energy put into how they collaborate and message what is being done in the community. COVID-19 gave a huge piece of this is how we can get information out through social media, but to have a collaborative, consistent voice throughout the community and also an easy-to-operate website if somebody needs a vaccine or any other assistance is something that needs to be done.
Priority four is really increasing that clinical presence and programming in the community. Again, we saw throughout the pandemic with COVID-19 that that was lacking, right? There wasn't a lot of in-person connections, programs that were happening, other than those vaccine clinics. One of the things that we found was the Bay Community Program that really was a partnership between Saginaw Valley State University and Bay Air and Act Behavioral Health. And this was grant-funded. What we learned in having our conversations with Joel is that this is something that can go forward as something new to Bay County Health Department, that they can work with other partners across, you know, across the street, other organizations with like-minded goals, to create another program that has significance just as this program did. And so, in conversations with individuals in our focus groups, they've also felt that there hasn't been that, you know, clinical presence throughout Bay County, and they want to bring that back. It also makes it more accessible for the people in the community to be able to get vaccines, to be able to meet with primary care doctors, and also have wraparound services.
And then the last priority, priority five, is to secure a transition to an optimal space that will serve both internal functions and the external greater community. I think that's pretty clear. Obviously, operating out of the building they're currently in, it's very separated from services. It's not very conducive to welcoming in the community, and it's, well, it was an adapted grocery store, so they have great jokes about being in the meat locker or any of those other pieces. So, having a space that is more conducive and also you can welcome other services within the community to a one-stop shop would be optimal. Want to bring us to a close before we open it up to questions. This was an extremely positive review. Very hardworking folks. They care so very much about the community and wanting to get better. They have been fantastic to work with the past nine months, working with Joel's team. They really make you feel a part of the group. So, those five initiatives are the what. For our complete plan, it also has the how, right? How will you do this? And that is something we reviewed with their team. I don't think this group wants to review that complete report of the how. We wanted to make sure we shared the what. We're happy to answer questions.
Any questions? If not, I have a couple comments. So, I was on a Michigan Association of Counties Health and Human Services Committee meeting yesterday, and MELF, the executive director from MELF, Michigan Association of Local Public Health, was there, talked about the turnover in health directors this last year. I think almost a quarter of the health directors either retired or moved on, so it was a stressful year for the health directors. Joel's still with us, so we appreciate that. So, that was one comment. And also on the accreditation committee that you mentioned there, too. So, it's an interesting process to, you know, quite detailed and keeps them on their toes and make sure they're doing a good job. So, and they've always passed, you know, with flying colors. So, yeah. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I just want to thank the director, Joel Strauss, and the team at our Bay County Health Department. As the chairman mentioned, the last two, three years have been very stressful for all of the health departments across Michigan, especially here in Bay County. We appreciate your leadership, Joel, and also the team you've assembled to help Reich and Wright, or Wright and Reich, to help us, you know, guide us into hopefully a new expansion of health services to all of the residents of Bay County and to have kind of a state-of-the-art facility going forward into the new century. So, I appreciate the comments and don't have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Last chance for questions. Otherwise, a motion to receive would be an order.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Joel, I'll have to do anything.
Drain Commissioner, the 2022 Annual Report, which is large size and is available online or in the office. And I'm sure you've all had a chance to read it, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, maybe, but down the road. So, I need a motion to receive.
They did already.
Yeah, it's Tom Herrick, and supported by Casey.
Okay. Okay. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move to the Ways and Means Committee. Mr. Benajak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution number 2023-49, opposition to expansion of Camp Grayling. I move to approve this resolution.
We're discussing. I don't know if she wants to make a talk to a representative before, and they haven't changed the plan. It's still the same plan that they've had. They haven't downsized it yet. And apparently, Midland approved it earlier today. So, Tuscaloosa and a lot of the northern counties have approved it. So, maybe down the road, it's up to the DNR director if they're going to downsize or not, or if they're going to approve it. So, that's where it stands right now. So, we have a motion and some words. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-50, Homeland Security Grant for the year 2024. Operation Stone Garden Grant. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-51, for the year 2023, community project funding. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-52, 2024 Community Corrections Grant Funding. I move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-53, Authorization to Execute USM Form 105 to extradite prisoner from Arizona to Michigan. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Resolution number 2023-54, Grant Applications Supporting Treatment Court Services. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-55, Acceptance of Congressional earmark Funding of $2 million for the Bay County Health and Human Services Complex Project. I move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution number 2023-56, Travel Request for 2023 National Turbogulosis. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-57, Acceptance of Additional Funding for Regional Parental Quality Initiative. I move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-58, Memorandum of Understate for Project Fresh, Market Fresh. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-59, Updated Purchase of Service Agreement Between A&amp;D Home Healthcare Incorporated Waiver Program and Bay County Department of Aging. I move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-60, Acceptance of USDA Supply Chain Assistance Funds, $5,147.47. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-61, Sale of Surplus Items. I move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-62, Elevator Consultant. I move to approve the resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-63, Approval of Raymond Robson Engagement Letter for Additional Service Release of the GAS-B87 Software. I move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-64, 2024 Budget Schedule. I move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-65, Payables. I move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And now, I believe we have Personnel and Human Services Commissioner Nemec.
Thank you. Resolution number 2023-66, Rescinding Resolution 2023-46, Hiring Shelby Taylor and Hire Haley Wentz at a two-year rate. I move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-67, Approval to Hire County Executive Assistant at a Two-Year Rate. Move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes.
Resolution number 2023-68, Approval of Agreement with ONLC Training Centers. Move to approve this resolution.
Support. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-69, Vacancies in 911 Central Dispatch, Juvenile Home, Sheriff, and the Treasurer. Move to approve this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And then we have Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Herrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution number 2023-70, Local Community Engagement Funding Grant, and I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-71, The 2023 Bay County Equalization Report. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion? I don't know if, yeah, there she is. Yes, I'd like to hear a report. It looks like some good numbers, so we all like that.
Yes, they are very good numbers, but they are also based on the sales throughout the county. And we all know what those have been doing.
Yeah. I know the assessments have gone up on a lot of properties, like mine, for instance, but that doesn't always raise, people don't understand that with the Headley and some of that stuff, you can't, you know, the taxes don't necessarily go up.
Right. And the inflation rate multiplier this year was actually 1.079, but it can only go up to 5%.
Locked in.
Yes.
Any questions about equalization? Looks like hopefully some more money coming in.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The motion. Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 2023-72, Reports of the County Executive for March. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
That will be all from the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Reports of county officials, county executives.
Chair, other than to express our gratitude to Bigby Coffee, yesterday and today, until 9:00 PM tonight, they're hosting a fundraiser for our Bay County Animal Services and Adoption Center. And so we welcome that support and appreciate them. So if anyone is in need of a coffee or anything else before 9:00 PM.
Where exactly is it?
That's out by Buffalo Wild Wings.
Okay. Okay. I saw the thing. I didn't know where it was.
And then also, just wanted to mention that our Bay County Golf Course, the last two years, we've had the highest revenue ever. Correct, Kristen? And, you know, our investments are paying dividends, and we get compliments about the condition of the course. It's still early spring, but the course opened last Monday, and we're expecting hopefully another banner year this summer and into the fall.
So last Monday wasn't too bad, but not too good today. Snowflakes fishing too.
There was 82 Saturday and the snow yesterday. But thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner comments. We added this a while back, and anybody wish to dictate or pontificate?
Mr. Herrick.
Nobody. The trustees at the township meetings, they always have something to say when I go. They gave a lot of comments at the, but we added that on just recently, so. Unfinished business. And a new business. And we have added public input at the end. So if there's anybody who would like to speak, now's the time to speak. Public ask.
Just a thank you. We came here seeking your support for the resolution, and you gave it to us. It would be inappropriate if I didn't say thank you, so thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Mr. Campbell.
I would just like to mention that National Day of Prayer is coming up on the Fourth of May at 12:00 noon on the steps of City Hall. And then don't forget with the Memorial Day services coming up throughout county. It sounds like I'm talking early, but guess what? They'll be here in a blink of an eye. And there'll be a service at the Bay County Building, Memorial Out Front, at 9:15, and over at the Edson, and then the cemeteries throughout the community all day long. That whole list is posted on the American Legion Post 18 page. So if you have a loved one that was military and they served, and they're buried in a local cemetery, you can look up and find out what time the military will honor those that have died in service.
And the other public input. What is the public input? Miscellaneous announcements. I think I'll, go ahead.
Cut. Sorry, Mr. Chair. I just want to let everybody know that the Summer Recreation Program registration is now open. It is a summer camp-style program that runs all summer long for kids age 5 to 14. Runs Mondays through Thursdays, 8:00 AM to 12:30, and it's only $120 for the whole summer. So it's an amazing program where kids do sports, clinics, and arts and crafts, and play in the park, and all of those things. So if you know anyone in that age group that is looking for some summer activity, our registration is now open.
And I think a lot of you got invites to the open house for the Veterans Meeting Place down the street here on the 11th. I think it's from like 3/6, so encourage you to take a look. They've done a lot of work down there, and it looks really nice. So it's on May 11th. Any other announcements? Mr. Herrick, anything about baseball? I see the Western Warriors won the baseball tournament.
No, they just, Western, Western put it to everybody, you know. They got, they're a very good team. And anybody who watches baseball, you know, it's early in the season, you know. And anybody who watches baseball knows it comes down to like when they get, they can look really good all season. They get the tournament time, and one thing happens and everything goes awry. But at this point, they look, they look very good, you know. They have a nice team, good coach, good kids. But there's good kids playing all over the county, so. They all, you know, every one of them does a great job, you know. They're all dedicated. You've got to be dedicated to play in this weather. And I know a lot of teams played yesterday. And, you know, you can play football, but I know the girls played soccer yesterday, too, at Western. They told me that they were playing, so. But it's amazing, but they're kids. They can take it. I can't take that anymore.
So I played baseball handy, and we played in the spring, and we had wooden bats. So whenever you got that fastball in on your handle, your handle would be library for about a long time afterwards. And Midland used to have a pitcher who threw like 100 miles an hour, and he would use a lefty also, which makes it harder when you're a lefty, which what I did. All I know is it hurts when the foul one goes off, so.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Appointments. We have a Library Board five-year term in June. We have the Land Bank Authority, two three-year terms coming up in October. We have Bay County Department of Human Services, one three-year term, and also is in October. Jury Commission, one six-year term in October. December, Bay County Veterans Affairs Committee, one four-year term. And Department on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms for Districts 1, 3, 5, and 7. Do we need a closed session?
There is no need for a closed session, Mr. Chair.
We haven't had one of those for a long time.
It's a good thing. You never want one of those.
Someday.
What should I do?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or is eating the jerk?